Let me first recognise that the head table, Honorable Robert Tong, Minister for Tourism and Urban Renewal, Honorable Iva Stevenson, Parsec in the Ministry of Health, our former Pal Rep, Mr Granu, the Development Officer in the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs, Mr Cozia Frederick, the Media, Kyri FM and DBS and GIS, and of course, the people of the Salibia constituency. Good evening. Good evening. Over the past few days, we have been having a series of meetings to inform our constituents and the country of the development and programmes that we have been implementing for the wellbeing of our people. And many of us, we are aware also of all the negative things that has been said by elements of the opposition in the effort to try to bring down our country and the development of our people by extension. And we have an obligation to let our people know what is happening. But I will focus mainly on the Salibia constituency and what we have been doing over the past years, past two years, to ensure that the livelihood of our people is significantly improved. In our last Tong Hall meeting in Badaka, we spoke about agriculture. And I made mention of the different programmes and assistance that we have given to our farmers within the Salibia constituency. And the formation of groups to ensure that our farmers can take the advantages that exist within the Ministry of Agriculture and what I'm able to do under the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs. And like I said last time, we had given 450 bags of fertiliser to the farmers of the Salibia constituency. And of course, I encouraged the formation of groups, which of course, Mr Elvis Francis is spearheading for me from the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs. He is our agricultural liaison officer. And soon, we will be having our farmers' group established in the Salibia constituency. Now, because of the large span of the Salibia constituency, from Sinecou to Tuna Village and around to Atkinson, we realise that there's a need for more manpower on the ground to help our farmers. And so, we have additional individuals attached to the Ministry of Health in the Castle Bruce district to ensure that the needs of our farmers are met. Also, I made mention last time that the Ministry of Agriculture will facilitate us in having 480 bags of fertiliser. And I can assure the farmers of the Salibia constituency, by next week, their fertiliser will be delivered because it was cleared today on the pot. So, farmers, we're expecting you to do a little contribution when this fertiliser will be available. And we must thank the government of Morocco for facilitating us to have fertilisers. And of course, the Minister of Agriculture will be joining us in a while. Not as a speaker, but there are lots in terms of agriculture happening on island, and the people of the Salibia constituency must take advantage of those facilities. The 10 million at the aid bank, for example, I was told that some farmers, they are unable to access. But I have a different news coming from the bank that indeed, some farmers are accessing. And we'll do our best to ensure that we facilitate the rest of the farmers who may have some difficulties in accessing those funds. And this is all in an effort to ensure that our people get into farming. And like the Minister of Agriculture is always saying, that we need to take farming serious because these days, farming is a business. And if we are going to do business, we must be serious about it. There are a lot of opportunities existing. For example, in the northern side of the island, where we have the development of hotels. And with the development of hotels, there will be a demand for agricultural produce. And there are many short-term crops in terms of agriculture that we can do in the Kalinago territory to ensure that we gain the agricultural dollars that we are in need of. I mean, when I speak of short-term crops, I'm speaking of vegetables. Lettuce, for example, is one of those vegetables that is very costly now. I understand a friend of mine from the Atkinson community, whom we helped with some seeds, he's actually selling one head of lettuce for $5. So if you have 1,000 lettuce heads, then that would be good business for us. So those of us in the water catchment, in the water area, for example, in the tuna community, I want to assure you that we will continue to boost vegetable production, especially in the tuna community because of the abundance of water. And of course, while on business, we are all aware of the small business facility that we promised in our 2014 manifesto to help the indigenous people and the Salibia constituency by extension to take entrepreneurship to the next level. So far, we have received numerous applications. And when calculated, we have over $0.8 million in terms of individuals who applied. Which, of course, we are aware that we only have 500,000 in that facility to help the people of the Salibia constituency. The disbursement will be made no later than Friday next week. So all the individuals who apply, you may not be able to get in the first phase. But the Minister of Finance has assured me that whatever is needed to ensure that business thrives in the Kalinago territory and Atkinson, he will ensure that the funds are made available for our people to develop themselves and become sustainable. And I'm hoping also that more individuals can continue to apply so that we can have a legitimate reason to ask for more funds. But one thing I want to caution is that when we receive those funds, whether it is for craft production, whether it is just to restock our shop, or whether it is to open a meat shop, or whatever we are planning to do, please ensure that we put the money for what we said it will be used for. Because at the end of the day, we wanted to become a successful programme so that we can continue to empower our people and create employment within the constituency. We continue to engage our people also in small business development. In the Sinecou area, we have the establishment of the Rural Business Enterprise project, which was a pilot project, which started under the Ministry of Commerce and Small Business. We had training in terms of sewing, tourism, craft making and catering. But, as we said, it is an incubator. And people need to move from being in the incubator to start their business on their own. So I'm encouraging those individuals who participated in the programme at the Sinecou Rural Business Enterprise to get the forms from the ministry. Or you could contact me, I could get the forms for you and ensure that it is filled out so that we can take opportunity of the small business fund that is available. Also, we spoke about the Salibia Furniture Enterprise, which we started sometime last year. With funding from the Ministry of Constituency empowerment in the sum of $90,000 to provide training to 15 young men within the constituency. Of course, we had given them a stipend during the training. And I'm happy to say that Mr Alexis Prince was the facilitator of that programme, of this training programme, which ran very well. Right now, at the Salibia Old School, we have some heavy equipment furniture, some heavy equipment for making furniture. However, we need a little bit of financing, which we will get soon, to ensure that we could start producing furniture at Salibia. So it's an ongoing programme. And also, we'll keep on training people within the constituency to ensure that we have a vibrant economical community on island. We have heard also of the alternative energy that we are pursuing vigorously to ensure that the Salibia constituency becomes the first green community on island. And for those of us who are coming just across here, you'd realise there's a little switch in the school. It is for the solar power energy that we will be passing on to the resource centre. And of course, with the solar project, which was funded by Five Seas, we have seven public buildings that will benefit in the coming few days. We have the Maho River Health Centre, the Sensi Resource Centre, the Kalinago Council, the Sinecou Enterprise, the Kalinago Barron and Otte and the Computer Centre, which is in point. So when you pass, you see the solar panels on these structures. They are from the project that I've just spoken of. Also, in addition, there are 15 remote dwelling homes that were fitted with independent units. And I'm very happy to say that most of, or all of these individuals, they are very far from the grid. And if they had to pay for electricity, it would cost them no less than $20,000. And I see maybe one or two of the recipients here who are very happy with this solar project. Because they actually, they don't have to pay for any electricity, I believe, for the next 20 years or so. We come to housing. Prior to the Dominican Labour Party, we have always had a housing issue in the Kalinago territory in terms of housing. Because our housing structures, when our grandparents, when they constructed those homes, they have aged for a certain, for this span of time. And so, with the Labour Party coming into power, we were able to secure homes for our people in the Salibia constituency. And thanks to the Venezuelan government and the Chinese government for helping us in our time of need. And we must say thank you in a big way to these governments and to the government of Dominica for building friendly relationships. Because many times, we forget that these are the people who help us in time of need. And there are certain elements in our society, or people in our society, who are trying to say that we should not have relationship with these friendly countries. Also, I've spoken with regards to the housing from the Koreans. I'm happy to say that now, we are moving very fast in developing those structures. And at least by the end of this month, we will have three structures completed for the single occupants in our constituency. Yesterday, I visited one of those structures. And I can say it is about 80% complete. So by today and tomorrow, I believe the home will be complete. And what remains to do is just some painting and the fittings inside. And these are our senior citizens. And sometimes you hear people, they criticise us. They say that we are giving, we are making people greedy. But it is our responsibility for us to care for our senior citizens because they have contributed towards the development of our community. And each of those structures that I've just spoken of is valued at $46,000. And we have 36 of them to construct. So most of our senior citizens will get one of those structures so that they can live a comfortable life, a comfortable twilight of the days. And of course, the Minister, Honorable Iva, who is here, will speak a little bit to health. So I will just leave this on his part for him to discuss or share some information with us. But I must say that within the Ministry of Health, they are doing all they can to ensure that our health system is much more improved in the different health districts. Because we are fully aware that half of the Kalinago community goes to Castle Bruce, and the remaining half goes to Marigot. So we can well understand what happens to an elderly individual who will travel well down to Marigot to receive health services. But when you get to Marigot, already the health facility is filled. And our people cannot be serviced and must come back home. So we are doing all that we can to ensure that we improve the health, at least to accommodate more of the people. And again, we have heard the news from the Mexican government that we have received $5 million for the development of the new Marigot Hospital. And this, I believe, is going to benefit the Kalinago community very much. In terms of road construction, many of us, we are aware that, prior to me coming, we used to pass around the schoolyard here. And we have done this piece of road at the front of the resource centre that we just came in, in the tune of $46,000. We have completed, from the Ministry, we have completed the Sensi bypass, the SimSim road, which cost us $80,000 to do the concrete works. And now the road is completed to reach to the SimSim antenna. And also, we spent $60,000 to bring portable water to the people of SimSim. The Salibia Church Road, we did at $15,000. And the Lagley Road, we spent some $60,000 on the Lagley Road. Recently, we have spent $190,000 on the Horseback Ridge Road. And we have quite a bit of work to do. And we'll be spending $389,000 by next week or so to ensure that the Horseback Ridge Road is completed. And we can welcome the tourist buses to travel to our scenic community of Badaka. And of course, the beautiful scenery that they love to see. Of course, we have the Maho River Road, which was completed in the sum of $40,557. And the Taftia Road, which is close to Miss Gailing, Badaka, to go back to Mr Lynch, in the sum of $56,000. And the Margaret Gotta Road of $34,995. So within the past two years, we have spent $458,543.79. Yesterday, I was informed that the cheque should be ready by tomorrow, or at least by Monday. So once the cheque is ready by Monday, we are going to see the commencement of work continuing on the Horseback Ridge Road. On the Anchisel Road, which is from the bus stop to go up to the hill to where Mr Paul Baron lives. And we will be spending $123,500 on the Anchisel Road. In the Upper Hilton Road, which is commonly known as Teacher Boot, to go back to the Horseback Ridge Road, we'll be spending $137,500. And the continuation of the Lagley Road will be spending $147,000, $147,700 on the Lagley Road. And of course, in the Housing Scheme Road in Sinecou, we'll be spending $41,600. So within the next week or so, we'll be spending $886,700 in the Salibia constituency. And it is in hope that by the end of this year, all our community roads will be in perfect condition. And just today, I submitted to the Minister of Agriculture the list of our feeder roads for better farm access. So the Betwuz Road in Golet River will be taken care of this year. So we are going to do the Betwuz Road from the Housing Scheme to reach, we are Mr Ivaris Lucian Land Is or close to the Duasko Tank. And of course, it's quite a bit of financing to be spending at this time when all other countries, they are suffering economically. And this money is coming from the Citizen by Investment Fund. So while some people are trying to bring down our programme, we, as a community and as a constituency collectively, we must condemn the actions of those who are trying to destroy our programme. We are also, of the developments that is happening in Sinecou, during the week while driving to work, I felt very happy to see so many young individuals with their bags on their back, their tools in their hands, and they are heading to work for 8 o'clock. And this is because the government of Dominica is spending $539,000 on washroom development in the Sinecou community alone. So everyone in Sinecou, we started last, this month. So within three months' time, everybody in Sinecou will have a washroom facility. And those with little structures or structures that may not be able to support those washroom, the government will ensure that we take care of them in a timely manner. So the people of Sinecou, if anyone in Sinecou, any young man in Sinecou is not working now, according to them themselves, is because they don't want to work. And within, between last month and this coming month, if anyone in the Salibia constituency is not working, they are not willing to work. And of course, we know in the Salibia constituency, I always refer to the Salibia constituency as the maker of cricket. And I see many of us here who played cricket in the past. And we are all aware of the state of how Jolly Johns used to be. And so, we have facilitated $30,000 for the development of washrooms at the Jolly John playing field. As of recently, the Ministry paid $5,000 for the upgrading of Jolly Johns before the solar lighting. And for most of us who haven't been to Jolly Johns recently, at this time of night, we should take a little lime to Jolly Johns to see how beautiful it is with the solar lights that we placed there recently. And this cost us $104,665.65 to ensure that we had the lighting at Jolly Johns. And I'm very happy that the Salibia constituency was one of those first constituency to receive solar lighting. And of course, there are other, a lot of things that we are doing in the constituency. We have the NEP programme. And for my visiting friends who would be travelling maybe from the West, Lee, and you'd have realised how beautiful it is to be travelling through the territory because of what, of the level of satisfaction that we have in our NEP people in terms of the beautification. So you will see flowers planted around. And I'm hoping that when there's the competition for the most beautiful community, that the Salibia community will give some other constituencies some competition. And we have quite a bit of people employed under the NEP. For example, under the Yes Week Care, we have 16 individuals employed under the mentorship, giving the various schools additional support to ensure that they provide the assistance to the students. We have 22. On the beautification, we have 45. And on the security, we have seven. And at the Kalinago Barron and Otte, we have three individuals. So in total, we have 93 persons employed under the National Employment Programme. And we have six supervisors, which add up to 99. So we're missing one to make 100. And they are doing a wonderful job. I must thank all of them for working hard to ensure that we make the community a better place for everyone. Most importantly, I want to say a special thanks to those who are under the Yes Week Care programme. Because those individuals under the Yes Week Care programme, or mostly our senior citizens, it's a blessing to them. And if it wasn't for the Dominican Labour Party, I'm not sure what would become of them. Many of them would have maybe have passed on by now. And I was kind of taken aback when I heard an announcement, or not an announcement, but when the PM said it originally started in the Kalinago territory because of when he visited someone in Laplin, and then it was piloted here. And we speak of those who are under the National Employment Programme, while the opposition is criticising and say, they call it never-ending poverty. But we must say that it is alleviating poverty in the community. So while they're saying it's not ending, we need to send a message to them that if they come to the Salibia constituency, for one example, that they will see the beautiful work that our people are doing on the ground. And we are spending a lot of money. So in one month, we are spending $58,509.10 in the Salibia constituency. And this is money which remains in the local economy. And for one year, it doubles quite a bit. Well, not double, if you multiply it by 12 months, I wanted to say, we'd get $702,109.20. Now, this does not include all the graduates that we have engaged in different offices. And we have many of them engaged, for example, one at the Kalinago Affairs, some at the library and some at the various institutions on island. In our last meeting, also, I spoke about assisting our college student. I want to let our college student know that they will receive the money by the next week. Because we realise there is always a challenge for our students. And because of the distance that they have to travel to Tongue, sometimes our bus drivers don't do justice to them. They charge them a little bit more than is expected. But let me assure our college students that they will receive their transportation allowance. And as soon as we get it from the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs, we will write a letter to all college students to inform them to collect their transportation contribution. The Ministry of Finance or the Minister has approved for the Salibia constituency for housing assistance the sum of $368,695.98. Now, this will go a long way in helping us, especially again, our people who are the most vulnerable, to ensure that we do some repairs of, we say, refurbishing their homes so that they can have a more comfortable place to rest. And this would, this would, excuse me, this would include payments for labour. the idea of assisting our people, we need to take a different approach. It's a little bit sad to say, but some people in the past, we helped, we assisted. But because of their financial contribution, they were not able to do the work themselves. And so, for example, the cement got hard, the steel stayed there and stuff so. So what we have decided to do is, if we are assisting, we provide the labour to ensure that the materials is used on time. So if we're going to do repairs on any structure, we will ensure that labour is provided so that we have something that is completed. And let me just also reiterate that in Atkinson, we had some issues with a drainage problem by Marlaran area. And this too has been taken care of. We will see, we're commencing soon on the drainage. And of course, we will be spending $5,482.48 to bring electricity to the Sinecou playing field. Also, let me just inform with all that I've said that the Ministry or the Minister of Finance will be visiting us on Wednesday. So on Wednesday, those who are interested or those who would love to see the Minister, he will be available on Wednesday so that we could visit him at the Sinecou Resource Centre. Transportation will be available for those who would love to see him. And I'm very happy tonight to inform us that in the Salibia constituency, the Minister of Finance has approved 30 new houses for people in the Salibia constituency. So soon, we will see, we're commencing on our 30 structures. And there will be a special target group or those, or single parents, for example, would be considered. And I see some of my people here who are in need of a structure. So rest assured that you will be taken care of. And not only these 30 new homes, but more will be done as we progress. And of course, people, we need to be appreciative of what is happening. Because many times, we stay too quiet. And when we receive, when the government assists us and we meet other people, we say nothing. When we hear people criticise, instead of defending what we have received, we're helping criticising. But we must be thankful for those who are helping us. Because in many, in many other countries, the government, they are not doing this for their people. I believe, I'm subject to correction, but it is only in Dominica. And it would only take the Dominican Labour Party to do that for its people. Also, also, I remember a couple, couple months ago, we had some postings on Facebook. And we have to be, we have to be mindful of what is happening on Facebook. And people, they were criticizing the representative for the Saliba constituency for not contributing to Kalinago Week. In the first sitting of Parliament, we went to Parliament as a government, and we changed the name from Carib to Kalinago. And that, I believe, must be applauded by the community. And for me, not to contribute towards Kalinago Week, it would be an embarrassment for me. But nobody, or those who are supposed to know better, went on criticizing. But I can say that the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs did contribute twenty thousand dollars towards Kalinago Week. And of course, we also contributed fifteen thousand dollars towards the Serinal Festival in Atkinson. And those things we need to know, because sometimes we hear things out there, and we are not able to defend what we are hearing. Our government, the Dominican Labour Party, remains focused on the development of Dominica. And most significantly, the development of the indigenous peoples. While some people may have alternative views, it is the first government that have assisted the Kalinago people to that extent. And many other communities, I remembered when, 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 if I'm not mistaken, I remember when Mr. Grandal, Mr. Kelly Grandal was our minister, during that year, I believe we had at least thirty-five of our students going to Venezuela to have a university education. That was the first time. And from then, we have always had our Kalinago people going to other countries to have a university education. Those who did not receive scholarship, I can tell you that we have assisted them significantly in helping their tuition fees, or whatever fees we have to pay for them. And even here locally, we have been paying for school transportation. I remember when I went to, when I went to the Adventist School, this night I can never forget, they had to almost walk from Calabashi to the territory. And I had to wake up at four o'clock in the morning to get prepared for five o'clock because I had to take bus to go to Portsmoke. But now, we have buses taking our students from the doorstep to the school compound, from the school compound back home. And in addition to that, we give books, we give transfer grants. So really and truly, it is now up to our student to perform, and recently tablet. So now, we have everything at our fingertips. And if we don't want to make use of it, Mr. Tong, the Minister of Tourism, cannot push it in our head, the Prime Minister, and the other ministers, all of us as ministers, all we have to do is create the avenue or the means where you can take opportunities and ensure that you, that we better our lives. So without staying any longer, because I have two ministers here, there's a little distance to travel, I'm going to say thank you very much for listening. And we will entertain as many questions as possible, once you have questions to ask. Okay, so thank you very much.